The board continued that by supporting and appointing Dr. Monte Perez as acting president, while Chancellor Roman, we lent him to be serving as interim chancellor for this district. The continuity of experienced leadership at ELAC has been invaluable to our success. With your action today, we look forward to Dr. Roman's continued leadership for the entire district as we navigate budget challenges, enrollment shifts, and evolving educational landscape. So, thank you, Board. Congratulations to Dr. Roman. Our Senate stands with you. Thank you, Board, for your continued leadership and consideration of East Los Angeles College. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, back to disclosures.
Yes, thank you so much. And thank you, Board President Eno, trustees. Prior to this proceeding to the vote on matters before the board agenda today, the trustees are advised if there are any items on the agenda for which they receive a contribution from a donor affiliated with the matter. Board members are required to disclose or recuse under the Levine Act or other laws related to having a conflict of interest. Trustees, when your name is called, please advise if you have any disclosures to make on any items on the agenda, and if so, identify the agenda item for each item. Also, please state the basis of the conflict by either identifying the donor or disqualifying campaign contribution, or providing information about any other disqualifying financial interest. I will go ahead and call upon the trustee who are here. Trustee Hernandez, any disclosures? Trustee Hoffman?
No.
Trustee Vella?
No.
Trustee Veras?
Trustee Eno?
No.
Thank you.
So, next is the land acknowledgement approval. Land acknowledgement. The Los Angeles Community College District holds land that originally and still are inhabited by the Gabberliano, Tongva, Gabberliano, Band of Mission Indians, Kids Nation, and the San Manuel, San Fernando, and San Fernandino Totavian Band of Mission Indians. We honor and respect their elders and descendants as they continue their stewardship of the lands and the waters. Before we proceed, Chancellor Roman, are there any changes to the agenda and order of business?
For President Eno, we have one change. We'd like to remove item Z2, request for early tenure. We'll bring this request back to the board next month. This is related to employees' contract advancing.
Sure. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda of the order of business?
So moved.
By Vella? Second by Veras. Roll call, please, Lupe.
Student trustee Behams advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Thank you. Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Great. I'm gonna return back to disclosures. Chancellor Roman, can you please leave the agenda item again?
Yeah, for purposes of consistency, I'm gonna go ahead and read this statement again to the trustees. Prior to proceeding to vote on the matters before the board on the agenda today, the trustees are advised if there are any items on the agenda for which they receive contributions from a donor affiliated with the matter. Board members are required to disclose or recuse under the Levine Act or other laws related to having a conflict of interest. Trustees, when your name is called, and I'll call the three trustees, please advise if you have any disclosures to make on any, actually, two trustees, excuse me, on any of the items on the agenda, and if so, identify the agenda item number for each. Please also state the basis of the conflict by either identifying the donor of a disqualifying campaign donation, or by providing information about another disqualifying financial interest. I will call the two trustees's name. Please respond if you have any disclosures. Trustee Gabriel Bueno?
None.
Okay. Trustee Michelle Henderson? Thank you.
Great. So, regular meetings in closed session? May I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting in closed session of April 2nd, 2025?
So moved.
So moved by Hernandez?
Second.
Second by Hoffman. Roll call, please, Lupe.
Student trustee Behams advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Wellna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Great. Now, from the representative reports, do I have any members of the resource table that wish to be recognized at this time to make comments before the board?
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Board. Congratulations, Chancellor Rodriguez. Congratulations to you. Oh. That's why I got that, look. Chancellor Roman. At the IU, we're standing here. We're supporting you. A big venture like this needs strong leadership, and we're glad that the board agrees that you are the person for that. So, we're just here to just stand with you all, and stand with this district actually, because we need this, we need leadership, especially at this time. So, thanks. From the union's perspective, I want to give some information about our professional development day that's coming up in June. It's a day, we had it last year at Pinstripes in, I believe it's Canoga Park or something like that. We'll get the information out. But it's a day to unwind for our members to learn different issues that affect their job. We have great presenters. Last year, we had some individuals from the ELLR office come down and talk to our membership about some difficult issues that they come into contact with. We also had Dr. Trishawn Hall Baker, and she gave a wonderful presentation last year. So, we have some more people coming out this year, haven't yet made overtures to some of the individuals. I like to come out from the district, but we'll be reaching out to them as well. I want to thank our members at home, and that's here in the building, for really trusting me for the last seven years as their leader. It's a humbling thing when people trust their respect and get behind you to lead this unit. We have almost 300 strong members here, and I don't mean almost 300, all of them are strong. The exact number is off a bit. And I also want to thank our members. Just recently, I was elected to the SEIU LA City in Orange County Executive Board, which is a first for LACC. That same trust that they've had with me here in the district, that they also got behind me, along with a lot of the LA City employees that got behind us. It's a wonderful thing for us. I believe it brings more highlights to LACC for a couple of reasons. There's never been a LACC employee steward on the OCLA committee. The reason why is because, probably because it's like 30,000 votes. So, I got on the slate, and we got some people behind us. So, everywhere I go, I'm just telling the members, everywhere I go, you guys are with me. When we were out at the Capitol on the 25th lobbying for money so we can stop job cuts, LA City is in a $1 billion hole, we're asking for help from assembly members and senators so we can help save some of these jobs, okay? Our LACC membership, they were there with me. When 5,500 of our brothers and sisters walked out, I was walking those strike lines with them, and I feel like my LACC members were there as well. So, I want to, like I said, this is a humbling experience, having really asked for these things, but I thank you for entrusting me with your leadership, and I won't fail you. And once again, Chancellor Roman, congratulations.
Good afternoon. My name is Angela Chivari, and I currently am serving as president of the District Economic Senate. So, first of all, on behalf of the DAS, I want to congratulate interim Chancellor Roman, soon to be permanent Chancellor Roman, on being selected for this position. We really look forward to working with you. We are very excited to have you in this new role, and hope that we can turn, this district can turn the page on some of the more challenging aspects of our past that we've been dealing with and concerned about. So, we look forward to working with you, supporting you in this role, and advancing inclusion, diversity, equity, accessibility, and anti-racism, on behalf of all stakeholders in this district, and in particular, in advancing gender equity, because I think we have a lot of work to do in this area. So, again, congratulations. The District Economic Senate is meeting tomorrow at East LA College. We will be voting on supporting LACC-sponsored legislation, as well as holding elections for officers. So, we look forward to working with you in the future, especially in the area of legislative advocacy. The State Economic Senate met in late April. I would like to take a moment to congratulate Los Angeles Valley Senate President Edgar Pettis, who was elected to serve on the ASCC Executive Board, and he will be joining two other distinguished faculty members from the district, Robert L. Stewart Jr. from Southwest, and Carlos Guerrero from City. So, LACC is well represented at the state level, in addition to having a member, Adrian Brown, from Harbor, on the Board of Governors. We are, we have formed an AI task force. The DAS plans to hold a summit, an AI summit, on Friday, August 22nd, to discuss and focus on a number of issues, pressing issues, including acceptable use policies, AI-related concerns, as well as innovative practices in the classroom and for student services. Again, as we move forward, I would like to, again, reiterate our pledge to make the LACC a better place for all stakeholders. Thank you very much.
Jeffrey Hernandez, first vice president of the District Economic Senate. I ask Angela if it'd be fine for me to continue the DAS comments here, and I just had to say, Albert, so thrilled, so thrilled with you in this new position, really stepping forward. There's so much that our students, our families that we serve face, and you certainly are the right person for the job. I still remember back in 2020, right, when we had to call the action, working together, raising the value of equity amongst the college community in a way that we hadn't seen, right? And, you know, I do believe that in these times, that kind of principled leadership in very difficult, troubled waters, right, is gonna help keep us on the right path. So, I really appreciate all that you're gonna do. Thank you.
Good afternoon. First, I want to recognize this Jewish American Heritage Month, and I want to recognize the contribution that Jewish Americans made to the labor movement in the very beginning. It's also Asian American Pacific Islander Month, Mental Health Awareness Month, and Foster Care Month as well. So, I want to recognize those as well. So, congratulations to the selection of the new chancellor, Dr. Alberto Roman. I guess I won't be calling you doctor anymore. I'll be calling you chancellor, Alberto Roman, or chancellor doctor, I'm not sure. All right. I want to make it clear that the choice of you by the labor unions was unanimous. And it's kind of surprising, because when we did discuss you initially, the first thing that came up was, in our last negotiations with you, you were a very tough negotiator, right? Wasn't easy to get what we needed or wanted. But the thing was that you were fair and transparent, and that was the thing. You explained why you couldn't give us everything that we wanted at that time, and we really appreciated that. I also want to say you're the right person at the right time, okay? Absolutely the right person at the right time. At a time when undocumented students are being under attack, LGBTQIA students, students of color, women, our, you know, our education system itself is under attack, we have someone who's going to be our chancellor, who is a formerly undocumented child, right? And that is really saying something against what Donald Trump says, is that undocumented people come here, they're criminal, they're, you know, they don't belong here, and instead they come here so that their children can live out the American dream as you have. And I look forward to you being not just an important symbol for all of our students' period of what they can achieve, but the fierce advocate that I know you will be for our communities. So, I appreciate that as well. And last, I want to say that we're headed into unsure budget times. We don't know what the federal government's gonna do. We don't know what the state budget's gonna be like, and we don't know what enrollments are gonna look like. And I want to say that every one of our bargaining units, I don't want to speak for them, but I'm sure that they all feel the same way I do. We want to be partners in the decisions made in the future. We want to help you make good, healthy decisions to make sure the district can keep moving forward in a fiscally responsible way, but also in a way that's responsive to our students and our students' needs. So, we look forward to that partnership. And we are hoping that the approach we take if things do get tough is not using a quote-unquote "chainsaw," as some would talk about it, but more instead of using a very surgical scalpel to make sure that we make cuts where cuts are needed and where they hurt our students the least. So, thank you very much.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Board President Eno, our trustees. Congratulations, Chancellor Roman. I know it's hard, because even saying a happy birthday after a while, you're like, "All right, I get it." But I do have to also second my labor sisters and partners here with, thank you for being the type of leader that looks at things with a whole-person approach, understanding that we're humans at the end of the day, outside of our class, our titles, and all the things that may divide us, and for making decisions that are inclusive and allowing us to sit as experts in our industries at that table. Again, it's not always yes that we're looking for. It's the conversation to feel like we matter, and we have that safe space to share our concerns. This is the type of leadership where you are leading from the ground up, and I love that, because we feel like it's a partnership. So, I thank you for that. My union thanks you for that, and for opening up monthly consultations where we can speak to you too. Thank you. My name is Andrea Edwards, and I'm the union president of Local 1521A. It is a privilege to always stand before you guys today. I'd like to recognize in the wonderful month of May, not only is it my birthday, his mother's day in this month, but Asian American and Pacific Islander and Jewish Heritage Month. May is also Classified Appreciation Week, which falls between May 18th and 24th. And thank you, Board trustee, President Eno, for acknowledging classified and giving us the opportunity to recognize classified, a person from my local today who's well-deserving. Thank you for making that a point. That is huge. I would like to also really kind of just very quickly just echo what James McKeever, Dr. James McKeever stated. We know that there's a budgetary crisis right now. We understand that we're gonna have to make some lean decisions and pull things back. I think what classified are seeking and looking for is the ability to sit in those spaces to also, as experts, as our CVA states, we are to be a part of those decisions. Most classified outpace their education degrees. You can look at it as clarable. Most of us have doctorate degrees, master's degree. We deserve, and what we're asking for is to be treated as experts in our industry. When it comes to SAP, how does the data get there? When it comes to dismissals, how do we render the policies that you put in place? Are we a part of the conversations? Is it causing more harm than good? We are sitting with those students. We know. We are your survey. Treat us as such, and allow that feedback to be implemental, and how you choose to make the decisions, and what departments and what staffing is gonna be prioritized. We can get the funding for things, but we also need to understand that the funding needs to be placed where it needs to be placed. And that would mean that we should also ensure the success of those departments, even if it's our categorical programs, if it's dual enrollment. We understand the altruism of what it means, but if you don't stack it properly, you end up harming more than you do good. If people don't understand how to withdraw, how to add, how to drop, if they don't understand what classes, how to get their materials, if instructors don't absolutely get the chance to put their students on the roster, you will do more harm. You will have students coming in that have fails, and that causes long-term detrimental issues. So, when we have programs that don't have the proper staffing, what we're missing is a critical opportunity to show our students in action by showing that our classified are going to be there when they need case management. Okay? So, a part of the decisions we are only asking for is to sit down with our presidents during our consultation, to really be heard in the critical analysis of what decisions you do make, and to really protect classified. You know, there's policies that talk about how you hire IAS, train of presenters, and professional experts. We're asking that those policies be followed, and that they're not subtle loopholes to actually not back-staffing or properly staffing classified. As a president, it's nothing harder than hearing from people who are mentally fatigued and burnt out, and are afraid to make a report, because retaliation harassment can be very subtle, right? It can be, no, you're not able to take that college course, or all of a sudden, I need to switch your department, or switch your schedule. These are real-life fears that my classified members deal with daily. We see the budgetary crisis, but no one talks to us about what does that look like for us. We see the strikes, and we're afraid about what does that mean for us. And as the president, it's heart-wrenching to stand and know that the harvest is few, it's plentiful, but the laborers are few. I'm watching the engagement dwindle, because if we cannot only not enforce our contract and ask for mutual respect, then what are we doing? How do I continue to sell something that no longer holds the pride and respect that it demands and deserves? So, I ask for, in these times that are coming up, we make it a real concerted effort to really engage classified in what you're doing when it comes to budgetary decisions. We are your experts. We can tell you what we're seeing. But I'd like to thank those presidents that are doing it well, who are making sure classified are being acknowledged in their evaluation, outstanding performances, you know. Those are the things that I do want to not fail to acknowledge. But, again, it's a pleasure. I do know that there's data and research I'm gonna bring to you guys, because there is some tough times ahead of us, and we just ask to be included in the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, May, you can speak. She's on behalf of Deborah Harrington.
Okay. Chris, or do you mind? We'll let SEIU, Teamsters, sorry, Teamsters go first. Sorry.
Thank you. Good afternoon, trustee president Kelsey Eno, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Roman, student trustee Amber Albaham, colleagues and honored guests. Thank you for the chance to be here today, not just as a representative of Teamsters 986, but as someone who truly believes in the power of this district to change lives. On behalf of Teamsters 986, I want to begin by celebrating our recent spring membership meeting held last Friday, May 2nd. It was a powerful gathering where we reaffirmed our commitment to solidarity, worker rights, and the dignity of every member in our district. These meetings remind us that progress is only possible when we stand together, united in purpose and action. I also want to extend my deepest congratulations to Dr. Alberto Roman on his appointment as chancellor of LACC. Your leadership comes at a pivotal moment for our district, and we are eager to collaborate with you to create a future where equity isn't just a goal, but a lived reality for every student, worker, and family we serve. Today, I'd like to highlight several resolutions that speak to the heart of our collective mission. First, the resolution recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month. Millions of Americans, including students and staff in our own LACC community, navigate mental health challenges every day. Okay? This resolution is about the student who finally mustered the courage to walk into a counseling office, the staff member who smiles through their anxiety to keep our campuses running. Mental health is foundational to student success and worker well-being. Second, the resolution celebrating Classified School Employees Week, May 18th through the 24th. Our classified professionals are the unsung heroes of this district. They are the custodians who keep our campuses safe and clean, the administrative professionals who keep our offices running, and the IT specialists who bridge the digital divide. They guide students through crises, answer a thousand questions with patience, and show up day after day to make this institution a home. Let's honor them, not just this week, but every day, with fair wages, respect, and the recognition they deserve. Finally, I want to reflect on the resolution honoring AAN HPI Heritage Month. This one hits home. My parents arrived here from the Philippines with four children and one suitcase. I was six years old. My baby brother was just five months old. My parents' journey was etched in sacrifice: long hours, multiple jobs, language misunderstandings, and an unwavering belief that education could open doors for their children. Their story mirrors that of countless Asian Americans, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, and Desi-American families, stories of resilience that have enriched this nation's culture. But AAN HPI Heritage Month is more than a celebration. It's a call to confront the inequities that persist. Let's honor not just our vibrant festivals and foods, but the quiet courage of AAN HPI families who rebuilt their lives here. And let's make sure every student sees their story reflected in our classrooms, not just tolerated, but celebrated. In closing, these resolutions are not just words on paper. They are commitments to students like trustee Baham, to mental health advocacy, to classified professionals, and to the diverse communities that make LACC extraordinary. Mahalo, salamat, xie, gamsha hapnida, arigato, and thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor. My name is Chris Anosan, representing SEU Local 99. I would like to extend my sincere congratulations, Dr. Roman, on your appointment as the new permanent chancellor of LACC. I know you worked very hard to get to this position. As you can see, your leadership, dedication, and commitment to excellence in education have finally paid off. Under your leadership, I'm confident that LACC will continue to thrive, fostering innovations and success for the students, faculty, staff, and community. I'm optimistic that your leadership will shape the district in a meaningful way and in the right direction. And on behalf of Local 99, we look forward to seeing the positive impact of your tenure here at LACC, and we wish you continued success in this new chapter, and we look forward to working with you. And as we celebrate the incredible contributions of our employees during Classified School Employee Week, this is a time to reflect on the dedication and commitment that each of you bring to this organization. Everyone plays a role in shaping this organization, whether you've been here a year, for years, or just recently joined LACC. And I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone for their contributions and how it worked. And I want to particularly acknowledge and recognize SEU Local 99 members for their contributions, hard work, and dedication to this organization. Oftentimes, our members are overlooked when it comes to being recognized and acknowledged for their dedication and hard work. So, I just want to give a special shout-out to all SEU Local 99 members, and say thank you for all the work that you do. And happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. Thank you.
Okay. I think that is all of our representative groups. Thank you. Reports and standing committees. So, trustee Vella has been extremely busy chairing a lot of our committees. There will be five that he will report out to, which are the Legislative Public Affairs, the FEMPOC, Workforce Development, Student Basic Needs, and the LGBTQ+ Advisory to the chancellor. Trustee Vella?
Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and start with our public affairs committee. So, I think I was really impressed by a lot of what is being said today about uniting, because as chair of this committee, pretty much it's been, you know, on and on, insecurity, you know. You know, not really understanding what could be the future for us as higher education in the nation, you know, not just here with us locally. I can tell you though, that in hearing our federal update in the committee. We have grasps upon, you know, what is, you know, the protection of our students, the protection of our undocumented students, of our transgender LGBT students by way of advocating. So I can tell you that we are supporting much of what, you know, has been advocating for from the higher education side, teaming up and talking with A C C T in particular, or Association of Community College Trustees. Monitoring carefully, for example, you know, some of the reconciliation bill from Congress to ensure that higher education is the priority in particular, community colleges, to continue to advocate for our categorical programs that are critical to ensure that we continue to serve our students. To protect the Pell Grant, we've teamed up with various community colleges throughout the country to ensure that the Pell Grant stays intact. And so I could tell you what's at stake and there's going to be fact sheets coming out. There's going to be a lot of, and I think the chancellor will send over messages to you all and to the college presidents. But I, I'd rather report out on the activism that the district is doing in order to keep us whole federally. And again, I think there's a, because we're united, the trustees are united with our bargaining units, with our presidents. I think, and our students, I think we're going to fare well. At the state level, we do see some small dip in our budget and, you know, we do see some quick legislation that's going to help us, in particular, when it comes to ensuring that our students are receiving our full financial aid. Ensuring that they're receiving essentially everything that they need to receive. So we are also working in that categorical grants on workforce is going to be very critical. Ensuring that our students are teaming up with our employers here in Southland in order to satisfy a lot of their needs. So again, lots of critical bills. I could go on forever about how many we have. But I can tell you again, our advocates and ourselves are working extremely united in order to get these through. And then at the local level, ensuring we're working with the city of L A, the county of L A metro to again have a seamless, you know, in particular on the basic needs front. I want to be very clear that we still have our basic needs centers being funded. We still have our pride centers. We will continue to do that again, finding creative solutions with the district to be able to ensure our students are safe. So I really want to thank everyone. I want to thank the members of the board for continuing to work hard so that we're able to advocate at these levels. So let's go ahead and do facilities next. So I chaired in absence of trustee Hernandez, the facilities master plan and oversight committee. Again, we really are doing well. We reviewed the build L A C C D program budget overview. This is again, something that we're very proud of. We continue to adhere to our expenditure process. And also understanding that we still have some dollars that have not been completely allocated. But we're working with our communities and our college presidents to do that. We do have our student housing request for proposal update. Again, this is, has gone extremely well. If many of you have seen it out there in social media, we received over a hundred applicants that were interested in working with us for student housing. So we're very excited about that. And also our bond program monitor, we received their quality report. And then we looked into our active construction project status reports as well, active design projects. So again, lots and lots and lots that we're doing. Let's go ahead and go into our ad hoc committees. We had our first ever ad hoc committee on workforce development. Again, very important in how today we are having our students, you know, meet that workforce gap. So setting the goals was part of this. Committee, I want to again thank Jim Lancaster, Dr. Lancaster, for putting this and helping us get this all together. Deputy Chancellor Nicole Lopez. We discussed Governor Newsom's master plan for career education and jobs first initiative, which you all read in the L A Times. We also had some of it being discussed at East L A College. The L A Fire Recovery Project we're doing with the chancellor's office in Sacramento. And then we had a guest presentation from the Television Academy Foundation, Anne Vasquez. Who, you know, we're looking to ensure that our students enter this industry that's vital to Los Angeles and Los Angeles County. The list goes on and on. We discussed South Bay Web curriculum updates. So I'll spare you all of the details on that. And then we went ahead and had our LGBT affairs ad hoc committee. You know, really tough conversations about hate crimes, conversations about our proposed hotline to report anti-LGBTIA incidents. We welcomed suggestions from our students, from our faculty. As you know, most of the programs that are currently being cut in the federal government are being cut directly if they are labeled LGBTQIA. So what a lot of people don't understand is that it's not just the Department of Education. It's straight down all levels of government and departments. So it's, it's a very, I believe, probably not a smart way to really look at some of the things like preventing suicide for LGBT youth. I don't think anyone would like that to happen. But again, these are cuts that are happening in the federal government. We're, you know, we're taking steps to, you know, respond. We're working with our faculty. We're working with our presidents. And again, doing a lot of the hard work. So I want to thank everyone. And then we had a report from each of our colleges and at the pride centers. And then finally, our student basic needs ad hoc committee. Again, just really working on all of the pending legislation that I think we're trying to, you know, be ready for any potential cuts on basic needs. And then, you know, really understanding what the district did. I want to thank trustee Hernandez, who went to the board of supervisors to testify on behalf of L A C C D to keep the peer navigator program. The peer navigator program was discussed in detail at the student basic needs. This is a program essentially where our students are able to contact and have information for not only just having housing opportunities with the county, but certainly just to coordinate overall basically. So again, I want to thank everybody, everyone who has been staffing these meetings, being involved. I want to thank the academic senate who was there also to discuss other issues like A B seventeen oh five. So look, we are literally in a time that I have never seen, and I'm not just chairing committees for fun. I really am really, really rolling up my sleeves. And so what, when I hear today what we've heard, it is, this is the time most likely that we all have to work together. So just so happy that, you know, we're hearing that tone. So that's it for Presidentino. I know, I think I went a little bit too long.
No, I, I want to acknowledge.
So give me a little bit of.
To acknowledge all of the hard work and dedication and initiative that you have done for the district and all the collaboration. So yeah, I definitely. Are needed and very, yeah, innovative. And I think it's keeping us kind of hopefully a little ahead of what to anticipate. So at least we're, we're a little bit better prepared and in a really good position. And so just thank you. Thank you for all of that. Next, I have trustee Hoffman. If you could please summarize the proceedings of the budget and finance committee that you chaired on April sixteen.
Thank you, President Eno. So at the budget and finance committee meeting, we had three items for information only. We had the three-year projections by college. And thank you to the college presidents for presenting ways that you are going to meet our budget challenges in the future. I think we probably need to have several more meetings so that we could really drill down on some of the issues and how we're going to make sure that your budgets are balanced and that we can weather the storm that is about to hit us, from what I understand. And I do want to acknowledge President Edwards from A F T fifteen twenty-one A, because you made such a good point. And it is classified play week, but you really did make a good point about the vital role that our classified employees play in enrollment and success of our students. And so when we look at our budgets and we look at, you know, trying to trim. We have to make sure that we're not trimming at the cost of not filling vacancies. And I know that's like one of the first things we look at. I work at a college and the first thing we do is we try to get those vacant positions off the books. And that's how we're going to try to balance the budget. But some of those vacant positions are key and vital to the areas that serve students. And so I would just say we need to have like a very thoughtful approach when looking at that. And I think the budget committee is very interested in getting a little more involved and taking a deeper dive. We actually, and I did this, I had this idea a couple of years ago as well. I don't know if it came to fruition, but it might be a good idea at some point chancellor. If the board budget committee could have maybe a joint meeting with D B C or E C D B C or whatever those acronyms are. With the district budget committee meeting, district budget committee, so that we could actually get a better understanding of your process and how you come to the conclusions that you come to. Because I feel like we sort of operate on separate tracks. And I think I would like to have a better understanding, and I think the committee would like to have a better understanding of your thought processes and how we can work together to make sure that we are going into a balanced budget and that we're able to survive. If there are deep cuts, you know, we're coming off of hold harmless and I just, I'm very concerned. And I do know that sometimes in meetings, I know I'm going on a little bit long. Everyone wants to look good and everyone wants to like make a presentation so that the board is impressed. We don't, we, we really want to work with you. We really want to make sure, because at the end of the day, this is our responsibility to make sure that this district is fiscally solvent and can take us into the next, you know, next ten years. So that's what I'm going to say about the budget committee and that item. We also looked at, there's a new fee policy, a new fee payment policy. And this is really kind of in line with, with Title V regulations. And students now will be obligated to pay their fees before the semester starts. I appreciated the presentation and I think the whole committee, and we had the same presentation at I E S S. The thoughtful way that we're putting together our, our fee payment policy. Because really, we need to give our students lots of choices and a lot of grace to make sure that, you know, they're not stressed about having to pay their fees. And so I really think we all appreciated the thoughtful way that this is being rolled out. So I just want to thank everyone for that. And I had asked for a list of our federal grants and sort of the expenses and revenue attached to those. And so we did get a presentation. I appreciate being updated if there's any, you know, actions taken by the federal government to take away any of those grants. And so we will, the board will be watching those very carefully. And that is my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Great report and plans. So next we have trustee Veras. If you could please summarize the proceedings of institutional effectiveness and student success committee that you chaired on April sixteen.
Thank you. We had three presentations. The first took up the bulk of the meeting, but it was a presentation from L A Pierce College on their program, comprehensive program review process. And we had an internet look at their child development and early childhood education. Certainly, I think one of those programs that we offer that's super critical to our society, sometimes undervalued in the wages that people earn. But I think the Pierce program directors and staff are really doing quite a bit to make sure that it's a pathway to a livable wage. And that's something that the committee acknowledged and appreciated and would like the entire board in our organization to obviously consider some of the lowest paid programs that have a college certificate are, are in these areas that are amongst the most critical for our society. So in the near future, we should look at the kinds of strategies we can endeavor to get involved with, to uplift this, this space. As trustee Hoffman mentioned, we also did take a look at the L A C C D payment fee policy. And with a slightly nuanced look when it comes to institutional effectiveness. But certainly, I think all the due diligence that the staffs put together to make sure no one's left behind was, was on full display for the committee to see. And, and, and there's, there is a level of comfort of what we're doing based on the great effort that the staff is going through. So thank you for that presentation. And we got a quick snippet of trends with L A C C D transfers. There was an assessment period from twenty nineteen, twenty academic year to twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. That of course is the heart of, of COVID for us. And so I'll just note for the, for the record here, that L A C C D did experience a decline in transfers during that window of eleven point six percent. Which is, which is comparable to the statewide decline of eleven point four percent. So most of the reasons it certainly can be attributed to COVID and the conditions during those, those years in that space. So but just for the record, obviously, it's something that we keep track of and we assess and evaluate. So that's the committee report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And next we have trustee Buelna, who, can you please summarize the proceedings of the student protection task force that you chaired on April eighteen?
We met.
Yes, good, period.
Yes, I think we had a lot of information. I completely forgot to prepare.
No, no, I mean, I think we are doing the work is what he is saying.
Yes.
We are, we are protecting our students and the task force with trustee Henderson are doing the work. You all are doing the work and we are very grateful for that. Yes, great. Trustee Baham, could you please summarize the proceedings of the student affairs committee that you chaired on April eighteenth as well?
Thank you so much. Yes, we had an opportunity to talk about the payment plan as well. Betsy did a very in-depth and comprehensive explanation and presentation of what we can expect and how we're able to explain to our students. You know, what they can expect and how they're able to, you know, be at better, you know, create payment plans or fill out passports if needed. And then also, we, it was a very short meeting. We had some agenda items that were rolling, but that were already either handled or already done. So it, it was, this will be my last meeting on Friday, which I'm very excited about. But I did have an opportunity to have a panel discussion for trusteeship with trustee Hoffman. It was two days after our board of trustees meeting last, last month. It was an amazing opportunity. It was at the Westin near L A X. And it was just an amazing opportunity to talk about best practices, things that I've learned along the way, things that I wish that I could have done better. It was very reflective and I had an opportunity to hear from trustee Hoffman and, you know, things that we shared. And, you know, she was, it was an opportunity for her to, you know, pour into me, and I think it was just an amazing opportunity. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I am going to go back to the student protection task force from trustee Bona. Could you please give us some?
Yes, I, I have that recall. We, we've had so many meetings. So we, we had about a hundred and twenty individuals who were, who were present. And we're being very cautious in terms of, of how we're disseminating information or just to protect the district overall. And, you know, there was a lot of interaction between, actually more interaction between general counsel Prieto and, and, and the students and questions. General counsel Prieto, I'm, I'm giving you a compliment. So. Specifically, you know, kind of discussing, you know, what our limits and boundaries are, are what we can do in protecting our students and, and giving them ultimately and passing them or passing on resources for ultimate student protection. And really giving instructions on probably on, on overall, for lack of a better word, behavior modification of folks, you know, in, in difficult time periods to make sure that, to reduce their risk. And I think that's the best way to put it, to make sure that, that everyone is as safe as possible.
Yeah, no, thank you also for both of your leadership and initiative with this, with this task force. It's pretty, it's extremely critical to the work that we're doing and some of the decisions that we're. and some of the decisions that we're making. So.
And my co-chair, um, um, General Counsel Henderson, uh, no, uh, Trustee Henderson.
Yes. Thank you. Um, okay. So with that, I have Board Travel Ratification Authorization. May I have a motion on item F2? So moved by Hernandez. I can second. Ino?
Trustee, uh, you know, and, and I, I was planning to attend, uh, if we can run the agenda now or, or next month. I don't, I don't, whatever is easiest in the process here.
Um, is it possible to add? Sure, for the, we gotta, Trustee Veras wants to attend.
Yeah, for Nelly. I, I know it's in July, but if it's listed now, we don't, if nobody else is gonna come up on, on where we save the, the time if we can, um, add addition there.
The, which one?
It's Nelly.
Nelly.
Nelly or Nelly? Got it, Nelly.
Oh, is General Counsel, we're, we're good.
I would, in the motion, I would just include the, the fact that we've added that, uh, trustee Veras' name in the motion. So that's a motion and second.
Amendment. Uh, I agree too. Okay. Great. Um, if it's okay for the P A roll call.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bwana?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yeah.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now to the fun part, the resolutions. Um, and so the first one is in appreciation of student trustee Amber Bayham. May I have a motion and a second on item G1? It's moved by trustee Bwana.
Second.
Second by trustee Hernandez. Um, any discussion colleagues? Please.
So, um, first of all, thank you so much for serving for this past year. Uh, we appreciated your perspectives and having you on the board. I know the beginning, and we talked about this when we were at the Student Senate, um, conference not that long ago. Uh, we talked about student trustee and board relationships. And I know your beginning here was a little rough getting on the board and we certainly learned, or I certainly learned what to do next time when we have a new student trustee and how the board can be more engaged in, in onboarding. Um, but you rose to the occasion. You've been really great to work with. Um, I wish you so much luck and I know I, I won't spoil the, the surprise, but you've chosen a great school to transfer to. And I learned a lot having you on this board because I think while we're here for every student, um, you taught me to appreciate our differences in many different ways. And I know that we didn't always have the same, um, we didn't always agree on programs and services and how exactly to serve students or what things to fund. But I think through your participation, we've come to mutual agreement for the betterment of this district and for the betterment of all of our students. And I am so happy and proud to have known you and to have been able to work with you and we're gonna miss you.
I do have a certificate for you. Um, and so maybe do we do a presentation in the front? Maybe all my board colleagues, we can get up and take a picture with trustee Bayham. And then I, I don't know if it's a secret, but trustee Bayham, did you want to tell us where you've decided to go? Not yet? Okay, not yet.
This has been an honor to serve our students. Um, that has been the biggest thing for me is to make sure that I support, uh, students well. Um, and that's all I came to do really. It wasn't anything else to support the student perspective and, and have a better understanding or be, be able to translate a better understanding of what students need. Um, especially, you know, in particular, for marginalized students, uh, that typically don't make it to meetings, you know, so it was, uh, this has been an honor. I, I've, I've enjoyed every minute of it. Um, I've learned a lot about myself. I've learned a lot about processes and and what I want to do and what I want to accomplish. And I just thank you guys for just supporting me and allowing me to support the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Lupe, I do need to do a roll call on this one.
Okay, but the motion was Dr. Bwana?
Um, yes, and then second by trustee Hernandez.
Thank you. Student trustee Bayham?
Yes.
Trustee Bwana? Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yeah.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so the next one is reaffirming the role of the Student Trustee pursuant California Education Code. Um, may I have a motion and a second on item G2?
So moved.
So moved by Hoffman. Second, second by Hernandez. Um, any discussion? Roll call please, Lupe.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bwana?
Yeah.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yeah.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
The next one is honoring Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. May I have a motion and a second on item G3, please?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bwana, second by trustee Henderson. Any? No, um, I, I would just like to say briefly, on Saturday, we held our third annual, um, APITA celebration, but also our first inaugural summit to really look at, um, what our district and our campus community needs as far as serving our, uh, APITA students. And I think it was a great start and this initiative also shows our dedication and commitment to this community. Um, I hope our programs and our clubs and our services just increase, um, as a reflection and our commitment to the district from, from us. Um, so that's all. Can I get a roll call please, Lupe?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bwana?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yeah.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the fourth, uh, resolution is commemorating Jewish American Heritage Month and International Holocaust Remembrance Day. Can I get a motion and a second on item G4?
I'm on.
Second. Moved by trustee Bwana, second by trustee Hernandez. Any discussion? Uh, please, yeah.
Um, so colleagues, thank you for, uh, moving and seconding this, um, resolution. Um, I'm really happy to see that this is on the agenda this month. And I wanna thank Dr. Gribbins. I'm gonna call you out, Dr. Gribbins from Valley College. Um, because a community member, actually a rabbi, uh, was driving by LA Valley College and saw on the marquee that it was Genocide Remembrance Day. And, um, didn't understand that we were, we sat on the marquee because it was Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day and we were closed. And so he made a couple of phone calls and it ultimately came to me, which ultimately came to Dr. Gribbins saying like, why, number one, wouldn't you put Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day? Call it for what it is? And why are we not recognizing Yam Hoshua, which is Holocaust, uh, Remembrance Day? And I guess this particular rabbi, he works at Stephen Wise Temple, which is up on the top of the hill in Moholyan, drives by Valley College every single day and like literally looks at our marquee. So good thing that those are working. Um, and I reached out to Dr. Gribbins and I just want to thank you for, um, making the change, acknowledging Yam Hoshua, um, because this year it happened to fall on the exact same day as Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day. Um, I also want to say that, you know, and, and I sound like a broken record and I say this every time we have a resolution, you know, let's think about what are we gonna actually do, uh, in the spirit of the resolution to make sure that people know that it's, that, that we care about these issues. Um, and so to that, and I just wanted to share that, and a lot of people don't know this, since 1985, Holocaust and genocide education was actually mandated in our public school system. Um, but there's not the funding to teach it. Only 26% of K-12 schools actually have some kind of a program to talk about the Holocaust or, or any genocide. And, um, 63% of kids coming out of high school have never even heard of the Holocaust. Uh, so I would challenge all of us on our campuses to see what we could do around, um, Holocaust education, calling attention to it. Maybe it's through student clubs, uh, maybe it's through inviting someone to your campus, um, to give a lecture. You know, the governor actually has a council on antisemitism, which is on the rise and probably the highest it's ever been. Um, and I just really want to thank this board because we've passed, I think, four resolutions and those were actually pre-October 7th, um, to combat and, uh, speak out against, uh, antisemitism. And I appreciate the support of my colleagues on this board and all of you. Um, but I would like to see a little more done in our, on our campuses so that our students feel seen and heard. The Jewish story is everyone's story. I mean, the Jewish people came here as immigrants, uh, for all the reasons why your family came here, the same exact reasons to give their families a better life, to look for jobs and live the American dream. And so really educating about the Holocaust is not just educating about an event that happened and we don't need to talk about it anymore. It's a story. It's a story of the Jewish people. It's an immigrant story and it's something that we need to keep talking about and keep teaching because everyone, all of us have a story and we all came from somewhere. So again, thank you colleagues. I really appreciate this.
Thank you.
President, you know, yeah, I feel very strongly that whether it's the Armenian genocide, whether it's our Jewish Americans, um, and, and the Holocaust, you know, recognizing these two incidents of life in our world doesn't mean that you have to then have another political position on something else. I just don't understand why recognizing that this happened, somehow it, it triggers that you might not be sensitive to the needs of other hor- horrible things that are going on throughout our world. And I think for me, living in Montebello, we had our first Armenian genocide martyrs monument and I was on the Montebello School Board and I was very proud to have been supporting, supported that. That didn't necessarily mean that I did not understand that there were other things that, you know, throughout the world. So recognizing that these things happen, we can't let, we can't forget them. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, I put my little two cents in ensuring that it wasn't so long ago that, you know, extremists on one side did not recognize the Holocaust cause. Um, that was a very tough time in our country, but on the other side now also people do not recognize. So think about that. The two extremes of our country have not wanting to recognize what occurred and we all saw and there's film and footage. So let's think about that. Let's think about bringing ourselves back to a place where we are not being influenced by, you know, for example, you know, um, perhaps a different story. Let's probably stick to, you know, the fact that we have, at least through my youth when, and trustee Hoffman's right, when I was on the Montebello School Board, we had this in our curriculum and, and by the way, I'm not aging myself, but I mean, I saw the footage and it wasn't social media, you know, it was on, right? It was films that were directly, um, you know, uh, preserved, you know, from, um, such a horrible time. So I just, you know, I'm, I just really thought it, it might be time to just say something like that, um, in, in our place on, on where we're at today in our country. So that's it.
Thank you. Um, Lupe, can I get a roll call please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yep.
Trustee Bwana?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yeah.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, item G5, Recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month. Can I get a motion and a second on the item?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by trustee Hoffman, second by trustee Henderson. Um, any discussion? Roll call please, Lupe.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote? Trustee Bwana? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yeah.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, President, can I ask a quick question on on, uh, the Mental Health Awareness, um, Month? I know this is obviously coming on the heels as, um, the Department of Edist is essentially announcing the stopping of a billion dollars to her school mental health. Um, I, I think most of this is focused on K through 12. But, um, is there any potential impact coming our way? I think we've done student fees, we've done other kinds of things for our student mental health, but I think if there's gonna be a big hole, um, in, in the K through 12 system and all around us and related to us, um, you know, if potentially if there's some update that can provide, provide it to the board and uh, to really understand sort of what the potential impact of a billion dollars being removed from schools for mental health will, will be for us.
Great point. Um, Chancellor, will you?
Yeah, happy, uh, to provide, um, a follow-up report. Uh, trustee Veras, this is an interesting, um, clearly, uh, issue that's happening at the K through 12 level. I will say that, uh, and this information's been provided. All of our colleges indeed have, uh, health services, uh, for our students that do include mental health. Uh, so that will continue because we're funding those through various, uh, sources. That's not to say that the fact that other sources are being lost won't impact our students. So we're happy to provide a report, uh, to you and keep a tab on whether or not, um, additional resources may be needed. But as far as the community colleges are concerned, and LACC D, we do have support, uh, mental health support for our students.
Thank you. Um, okay, great. So, um, item G6, Recognizing National Foster Care Month. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Henderson. I can second. Trustee Ino? Any discussion? Roll call please, Lupe.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bwana?
Yeah.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yeah.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you. G7, um, Honoring National Nurses Week, um, which is Tuesday, May 6th through Monday, May 12th. May I have a motion and second on item G7?
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Hoffman, second by trustee Henderson. Any discussion? No. Roll call please, Lupe.
A student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bwana?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Great. Um, celebrating Classified School Week employees. Can I get a motion and a second on item G8? By trustee, moved by trustee Bwana, second by trustee Hoffman. Um, any discussion? I know there was some discussion earlier.
Yeah.
Trustee Hoffman. Thank you so much. I just want to thank all of our classified employees for all the work that you, that you all do. Um, and I, I made some comments earlier. So thank you. And you're doing a great job leading the charge and um, Chris, so are you and Bruce?
You're still here too.
Yes, thank you so much, really.
Any other comments made by our colleagues? I think just an overall thank you and we're so glad to be able to honor you today. Um, and then in, in the Chancellor's report and after the board meeting today, but just thank you so much for all, everyone that you're doing. Um, and yes, we, collaboration is key, um, getting us through all of the things that we need to do. So please know that we're a team. Yeah, um, great. So in, oh, no, roll call please, Lupe.
Our student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bwana?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, G9, in support of the production of due process rights for Kilmar Alberggo Garcia. Can I get a motion and a second on item G9? I will move by trustee Bwana and I will second. Any comments? Please?
Yeah. I, I, I think there was a story in, in today's news that, um, the administration wants to send, um, immigrants to Libya. Um, and I think, uh, this is as neutral of a position as we could say that we support the Constitution and we support due process. We support hearings. Right? It's not radical to say these things. It may be a little difficult right now, but some people, but I, in putting this together, um, some of us thought that we need to make a clear statement and to disseminate it selectively, um, to make sure, especially as we're, we're advocating for the due process of our students. Um, that's it.
Great. Um, I guess just brief comments as well. Um, I participated in the May Day March and, you know, um, Kilmar is a labor, um, person as well and someone that labor and everyone is advocating a lot for and we just want to bring him back safely. Um, and it's an atrocious act. So thank you trustee Bwana for initiating, um, this and we So thank you trustee Bwana for initiating um this and we hope I, we all support it. So can I get a roll call, please, Lupe?
A student trustee Baham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bwana?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veres?
Yes.
Great. Um, okay. Moving right along, now it's our chancellor. Um, please um give us your report.
Thank you uh so much for President Ino trustees. I want to uh join in thanking student trustee Baham. Thank you so much. Uh, I got to know you a little bit and last couple of months. Thank you for your contributions. Uh, you've been a remarkable advocate and a resounding voice uh for your, our students and your advocacy, your leadership, uh your compassion uh for our students is truly admirable. We know you have a bright future and uh we look forward to getting updates on your progress of your educational journey. But again, thank you so much for serving on this board. We appreciate you. Um, thank you. All right, let me uh, I do want to join and again, May is a Asian Pacific and Islander Desi American, we know it's PETA Heritage Month. And again, uh through my message, I'm inviting everybody to continue to honor the rich legacy of, and the leadership and resilience of our PETA community uh throughout, not just LACC D, the state, the region. Thank you so much. This year's theme is legacy of leadership and resilience. And this really resonates deeply with the contributions of our PETA students, faculty and staff. So again, we want to continue to not only, as trustee Hoffman stated, pass resolutions, but certainly engage in activities that really show our support. Uh, as you know, you'll see in our uh weekly uh reports or campus activities, a lot of things are happening to show our support for students uh in the way that we honor and commemorate culture and equity and diversity. Uh, along those lines, I also want to uh thank and acknowledge um and commemorate Jewish American Heritage Month, uh Holocaust Heroes Remembrance Day and of course International Remembrance Day. Colleagues, this is also a time to celebrate uh the rich history and culture and contributions of Jewish Americans to our district, our state, our nation. The Jewish American, American community has shaped and strengthened the fabric of the American life in many, many ways. We also observe, as I stated, the Holocaust and Heroes Remembrance Day, International Holocaust Remembrance Day. And these days are not only about remembering the past, but certainly a call to conscience that we remember the victims, we honor the survivors, we pay tribute to the courage of those who resisted and those who helped. So may this time be a deepen of our collective memory, inspire education and renew our commitment to fighting antisemitism and hatred in all forms. Thirdly, uh I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge National Nurses Week. We do have nurses, of course, as part of our LACC D family. And uh we have six very amazing nursing programs within LACC D. And I can tell you they are successful in large part because of our nurses, because of our faculty. So I want to acknowledge uh their invaluable work and working with the colleges, with our faculty, staff and administrators to make these programs so successful. Uh, as has been stated, again, also support for the protection of due process rights, Kilmar Albergo Garcia. This resolution is not only a part of action of Kilmar, but really as trustee Bwana stated, this is a support of due process rights uh for some of our most vulnerable members of our community. So thank you trustees for uh taking a stance and bringing forward this resolution. Certainly speaks to the core values uh of our district. And Classified Employee Week, that's right, uh. You know, uh, May eighteen through twenty-four, I, I do want to first acknowledge all of the dedication of our classified staff across the district. Uh, we call them our unsung heroes uh who provide critical support to our colleges, our district office. And truly their profound contributions are reflected in the success of our students. And today we actually wanted to recognize two classified staff members who were nominated by their respective union representatives. And I will say that we will have others in the future. Uh, we'll have Local ninety-nine and uh we'll include the traits in a future recognition. Uh, but today uh I'm gonna, oh, I do want to say one thing, by the way. Believe it or not, we also have uh Teacher Appreciation Week. And I know it's K through twelve, that's right. A teacher is a teacher and so we acknowledge that and we want to thank our faculty as well as part of this recognition. But let me go ahead and move forward with the classified recognition. I'm going to first, uh Lupe, if we can go to the next slide. Here we go. Today, uh, we are today we're going to recognize Troy Spears from East Los Angeles College. Troy, if you're in here and I'm Edward, let's have this month with fifty words on behalf of the fifteen twenty-one A unit.
Yes, please, we want, we want to celebrate you.
Oh my God. The slide says it all, but it is an honor. Uh, when I got the, the ask of who would I like to appoint and it just, we have fifteen to sixteen hundred classified, but I had to honor Troy Spears for thirty-five years in this district, over twenty years serving his local in advocacy, uh, a four, uh Marie Corvette, a proud dad. Uh, he shows up in advocacy in so many ways. He's a treasure code of information, egg host, PC codes and girl, but I'm like, now what do we got to do? This is my mentor who actually allowed me to step into this position. There's no onboarding, uh, it gave me grace. And so oftentimes I'd be texting like, what's the game plan? And so he, he threw me out there. He was like, you tell me. And I said, no, no, I'm drowning. I got to hang on. But I am just so grateful for you uh for what you've done for the district, how you advocate for students and how you advocated for our union members when everything needed you. So. Man, a few words.
As they say in um that show, thanks for coming out. Thank you very much.
All right, and we'll call you back up. We have certificates of recognition. We'll do both of the presentations and then have a photo off with the board. So next, let me uh go ahead and call for Holanda Hawkins and Bruce Hicks from seven twenty-one. We'll do a presentation. Congratulations.
Thank you Chancellor. I'd like to thank uh for President Ino for even including the uh classified into this board meeting. I appreciate it. I think it's wonderful. So let's just give all our classifieds a hand. Uh, and Dr. uh Alba Lopez, Deputy Chancellor, uh when she reached out, I said, oh, well, I know somebody. Like right off the top of my head, I met Ms. Hawkins about seven years ago at East LA College uh trying to get a ratification and she was just on my head about what the union's not doing and this and that. And I said, oh wow, who you think the union is? It's us. And uh she had the great accident of coming to West LA where actually I work. And I said, oh, you came around and you are in the union uh helping it. What I've seen for her is a lot of hard work, a lot of dedication, uh doing multiple jobs for open. So think about when we doing cuts that that's going to go to somebody else, one of these classified employees. She's been doing multiple jobs, been going to school for her bachelor's of public administration, uh proud mother of two. One in college, I think so highly of this individual here for a certain reason too. With all these personal uh and work-related things that she has to deal with her family, her work. She fights so hard for our members, hard. On the phone late at night, game planning. This is not easy what we do here, getting in front and advocating for our membership. So I just wanted to highlight you and say thank you for our membership and we're just so proud of you.
I'm sorry, I'm a bit sloppy. She had me a bit confused. Um, just thank you, thank you Bruce for just knowing how hard I work. I not only work hard for just our union, but I work hard because I am in the admissions office and literally my goal is just to help students. I didn't plan it. I didn't plan on doing it, but somehow I just fell into the role and I tell people, this is what I was planning for. You don't plan on saying, oh, I want to work for the school because of course we all have different things that we're going in doing. But now I see all the students that come through and say, hey, Ms. Hawkins, guess what? I'm graduating. I'm going to this school. You know, I can't help but seeing, looking outside, seeing Dr. Limbaugh with all the students out there and they're graduating and I can say, oh, I have a hand in that.
Yeah.
So thank you Bruce, thank you board, thank you everyone for just giving me the opportunity to just serve LACC D.
All right, congratulations. Stay up for Holandra Edwards, uh, and we're going to go to our Spears. Uh trustee, if we could take a photo with our two uh, that's right, we have certificates of recognition. Uh, I appreciate it, so.
Sorry, I just wanted to briefly also acknowledge um a CIU ninety-nine Chris was on. It, it was her um advocacy also that helped us come up with this idea to recognize all of you. So thank you. Yeah. And then Chancellor Roman was all about it. So I'm really glad we can do some goodwill highlighting all of, for the two of you today.
Thank you.
And we have one more item. Again, thank you so much. That's going to be a hard, hard act to follow. But I'm confident that it'll be just as good. So let me at this time call up uh President Gabru and the delegation who attended uh Sejong City's uh recently, I think a trip and I'm going to have them uh give us a debrief and a presentation on this very uh successful visit. So Dr. Gabru, you have the floor.
Thank you Chancellor. Good afternoon, President Ino trustees. And um also on behalf of my colleagues and college presidents, Dr. Roman, we want to say congratulations. And we look forward to continuing to work under your leadership. So thank you. Um, so we had an opportunity to um um do some good work in South Korea. We sent a delegation of two to South Korea in January. But before that, we had a team from South Korea come to our campus to talk about potential partnerships. Um, and also we were given a huge statue from um, from South Korea with the king, King Sejong, who was the person that invented the Korean alphabet. So we were excited to have that conversation. And then they invited us to be able to look at some opportunities and said, we want you to come to Korea. And we wanted to visit Sejong City, which is a city where um there's some potential opportunities for us to do some work um with global students, international students and do some exchange opportunities. So I had the pleasure of traveling with our phenomenal faculty um um and our representative from the district, Maria Lopos, who will talk more about the trip, the opportunities and some next steps. So I'll let them take the mic and present this wonderful opportunity for our district in terms of partnerships and global education.
Thank you board of trustees for approving our trip um so that we can um make connections uh with uh South Korea and um bring back wonderful opportunity for our students so that uh we can also increase our enrollment uh throughout our campus district and elevate our uh reputation for globalizing um our education. First slide, um please. My name is Mickey Hong. I'm the director of the Korean program at LACC and this is Liann Yu, my colleague, who um is also a full-time faculty member employee two years ago because um our LACC program is thriving. Um, can you move on to the very first slide, please? Next. Okay. Um, this all came about um last year, last, last year already uh in October, which uh, you know, we celebrated Kangal Day, uh which means uh the Korean alphabet day and King Sejong is the um the king who invented the Korean alphabet and we were um, it was a imperial family company who uh gifted us the statue. And uh when we had the unveiling, um we, the news went uh, you know, viral. So um the mayor of this Sejong City, named after the king, had uh, you know, had spotted that and he just had to come to our campus to find out what it's about. Next slide, please. So this is uh, you know, last year, um July summer, when um the center is the mayor of Sejong City who came to visit us and if you see the faculty and, you know, uh former Deputy Chancellor Kathleen um who's also there, um, you know, joining us and uh welcoming the delegation. Next slide, please. And we were uh invited back to the city. So in January, with your approval, we um had the district uh represented by Maria Velos and the LACC president, uh Dr. Gabru and the two uh full-time Korean program faculty uh who accepted the invitation to visit their city to see um what kind of partnerships that we can um develop. Next slide, please. Um, you know, when we went, we were received with just incredible uh hospitality um down to every detail. Uh, we were able to visit the, the city hall at Sejong City. And you can see they were, they found the reel of uh LACC feature. They played that on the first floor of the um city hall as well as every uh, you know, flash screen TV throughout the building. It had um the welcome message uh wherever we went, banners, you name it. And the places that we have visited uh was both in Seoul and Sejong City. Sejong City is going to be that the, is already the de facto capital. And a lot of the ministries uh including the National Assembly will soon move there to extend, to enlarge the, the capital. Um, so a lot of exciting things happening. It's a brand new city, beautiful. We visited Kongin Park, which is the textbook publisher that we use for our Korean program. Um, and we visited the places listed. Next slide, please.
So uh as you might recall from our last meeting when we were here um last year, we had talked about building bridges, expanding our community, reaching out across the Pacific to our, our colleagues in Korea. Um, so this is an example that the bridge building has begun. So we have, um, we were able to acquire a ten thousand dollar scholarship um and an all-expense paid experience for uh two LACC students who can go and um experience the SM Entertainment Academy, which is equivalent to Universal Music, Sony Music, Warner Music, you know, one of the largest music uh industry companies in Korea and they're known for making K-pop idols. Next slide, please. And we also visited the Sejong Common Campus, which is basically a common space where universities can come and use state-of-the-art facilities. They're also finishing the construction of a dormitory. And we do have priority access to send our students to uh Sejong City to study and learn there. Next slide, please. Uh, and then we're uh, we've been very busy. We uh are also uh planning the, the next year's Maya program in conjunction with the LA Mayor's Office. Um, and in this program, we'll be able to send fourteen students to South Korea where they will engage in a program learning about Korean culture. Uh, and this is a part of the city of LA Youth Development Department. Um, but it's really a great opportunity for students here in LA to be able to go travel abroad and experience a different culture. Next, please. Uh, and then we're also um in, in the midst of signing an MOU with Youngsei University's Korean Language Institute. So the KLI is um one of the oldest language institutes in South Korea. They have trained over sixty thousand students from a hundred and twenty different countries, but it's a non-credit program. So we spoke with them and we're in the works of trying to So we spoke with them and we're in the works of trying to get some kind of a collaboration going so that they can take some classes online through LACC and then receive a certificate and credit that will then eventually transfer. But we foresee that this will potentially increase our enrollment.
Yes, this potentially has hundreds of, you know, international students taking our LACC Korean classes online that could bypass, you know, any, having, you know, having them on our campus physically. But they will be still awarded credit for their work previously with the Youngseu University. And the previous opportunities, we'll make sure to publicize them well throughout the city in English and Korean. So they know we are providing these golden opportunities. That's not even at Harvard. Can you imagine this? Going to SM Town Camp is like, if like Scooter Brown had a camp, you know, how to become a superstar in two weeks. That's the equivalent, that nobody else has that. And it will be for our community college students, so we're really happy. And the Maya Program has been around, I think in the summer, they're taking some students to Peru, but it's 100% paid, including their flight. Next slide, please. Where, can you move to next, next? We also visited Korean University of Media Arts at Sejong University. Can you go to the next, next slide, please? And we also visited Embassy of Republic of Korea in Ghana, you know, because we were called on by the California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office as part of the delegation to Ghana for the Pan-Africa Virtual College Project. And this is a way in which, you know, not only with Korea, but we are trying to make a Korean program accessible to anybody, anywhere who is interested. There is a huge interest in Ghana for, you know, studying in Korean languages and culture, but you know, you can't have faculty there committed. So we're trying to bring Korean education to Ghana this way. Next, please. So in alignment with the State Chancellor's recent amendment to the California Strategic Plan Vision 2030, it will include international education in a strategic and coordinated manner to increase global skills and competencies. And we are taking charge to really drive this home and bring it to our campus and our district. Next, please. So as conclusion, you know, LACC, we offer deep appreciation to the Board of Trustees and of course, the Chancellor for the opportunity to explore an international partnership and collaboration with South Korea. And, you know, what we bring back is, you know, to, you know, we've built a strategic educational opportunities for LACC students. We're fostering international collaboration for mutual benefit of institutions and elevating the reputation of our district and a campus on a global scale and increasing the visibility there for enrollment. Thank you so much.
First of all, thank you to our phenomenal faculty who, we have the largest Korean program in North America, and we're really proud of the work they're doing. Their leadership is the reason why we did this. So I want to thank our faculty and also Maria for being part of this trip. I also want to emphasize, we're also committed to our community and our students locally. We want to make sure we support our students, so that does mean that we are moving our agenda. Global education is part of our vision, and this is an opportunity to build partnerships where our students can come to us virtually from other countries, take online classes, support enrollment. So this partnership in Korea, the partnership in Ghana, as part of the Chancellor's Office, are opportunities for students to take classes from us from wherever they are without impacting our institution and providing enrollment opportunities because international enrollment fees also supports our local students. So we're committed to our community, we're committed to global education, and we want to make an impact in every way where we put not just City College, but the district on a global map to support education overall. So we are excited about these partnerships, and we want to thank the trustees and the chancellor for continuing to support the mission that we have at City College.
So we prepared a small gift for you that we brought back from Korea. I hope you enjoy them.
Thank you. Oh, cool. Thank you.
Thank you so much, President Gabru and team, for this wonderful opportunity. We always come back with great ideas, with great partnerships. This is yet another opportunity for us to continue to expand access globally to other parts of the world. So thank you for that, and thank you again to the classified team. Congratulations to both Holanda and of course Detroit. With that, Madam President, this concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
I have a question on the trip. I just wanted to thank you guys for your presentation. It was really eye-opening. I did have a question about, you know, maybe what further we can do to bring the K-pop industry at LA City College? Because I do think from a workforce development side, I think unlike any other genre of music, like I think it's really been very successful worldwide and has created a lot of, I guess, opportunities. In particular, when it comes to, you know, maybe plugging in our students to understand that. I don't know if that was a conversation, you don't even say today, but, you know, definitely, I think that that's something I think would be fascinating for our students to be exposed to because it seems really like something that is still strong today. Like even from, you know, I don't know much about it, so I'll stop there. But it'd be great to get our students to be exposed, obviously. But anyway, thank you.
Professor Hong, did you want to, or you want to come to the mics of the people virtually? Yeah, I think it's been a really great evolution.
You know, get, if we could get the district's help, our goal is to represent our program at the KCON, which we think it will be August. Yes, it's always here in LA. Maybe we can get a booth and we could get the district's help. That would be lovely. Because we can say, hey, did you know that right here in LA, we have the biggest, you know, if you want to, not just like utter, but actually read and, you know, sing and learn how to speak Korean, LACC, LACC D is right here for you. So we'll talk, okay?
Okay, I love that idea.
Thank you so much. Okay, with Chancellor's report done, we can do the agenda business now. So I have item J, well, I, item I, Consent Calendar Matters Requiring Majority Vote. We now have our, for review, Combined Consent Calendar for J1 through W6. The items include Consent Calendar for Human Resources, Personnel Commission, Academic Affairs, and Student Services, Budget and Finance, Business and Facilities. May I have a motion and a second to adopt Combined Consent Calendar for Items J1 through W6?
So moved.
So moved by Vella, seconded by Hernandez. Are there any items which require additional information from the board? With none being requested, Lupe, can I have a roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Great. Next item is item X, Business Items. May I have a motion and a second to adopt Business Items X1 through X11?
Second.
So moved by trustee Buena, second by trustee Hernandez. Are there any items which require additional information from the board? No. With that said, we'll play, we'll call, please, Lupe?
Did we get a motion and a second on that?
Yes, you had trustee Buena motion, trustee Hernandez second.
Thank you. Trustee Bayham's advisory vote? Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Great. Facilities Items, may I have a motion and a second to adopt Facilities Items Y1 through Y8?
A move.
Moved, moved by Buena, second by Hernandez. Any items which require additional information, board colleagues? None. Lupe, can I have a roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
All right, now to the Human Resources Items. Pursuant of Government Code Section 54953 C3, which is part of the Brown Act, you are required to make an oral summary of proposed action on salary, salary schedule, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits for all executive level positions as defined in subdivision D of Government Code Section 3511.1. During the open meeting in which final action is to be taken, in our case, we need to provide such summary for positions such as the chancellor, the vice chancellor, and the college presidents. The item now before us is to approve the contract for employment for Dr. Alberto J. Roman to serve as our chancellor for the Los Angeles Community College District, starting today through June 30th, 2028, with a salary of $36,666.67 monthly, with an annual income of $440,004. Dr. Roman will receive a 2% salary increase effective July 1st, 2026, and a 1.5 salary increase effective July 1st, 2027. Dr. Roman will be entitled to the health and welfare benefits available to the district employee under the district's Joint Labor Management Benefits Committee Master Agreement, including but not limited to the same retiree health insurance benefits and the same holiday, vacation, illness, and leave absences available to other unrepresented academic employees. Dr. Roman will receive a $500 per month transportation allowance consistent with other executives and college presidents at LACC D. He shall not be entitled to any other salary differentials. May I now have a motion and a second on item C1? Moved by trustee Buena?
Second.
Second by trustee Vella. Discussion, colleagues?
Yes.
Oh, please.
Some, some.
A little some, some.
No, I just really wanted to thank you, President Eno. You know, I, I do, you know, it has been, I think, a really positive way of us coming together to understand that we have an unprecedented time in our, in our history, you know, started with the fires. I know you remember that. By the way, what's that saying, being christened by fire or whatever? Trial by fire, it's not, you know, no pun intended there, but to today, to all the federal potential cuts, to just rallying with our state to ensure that Prop 98 stays intact, to ensure that, you know, our faculty in particular continue to have the resources. So all of this being said, I want to thank all of the candidates that came to interview with us. I want to thank you. I want to thank our general counsel, our deputy chancellor, and Dr. Cola Lopez for managing all this and ACCT. So again, you know, everything that got done was a lot of due diligence. There was comparative on our salary. There were comparatives to, you know, as you see here, the increases are way below what, you know, potentially COLA could look like next year. So these are all things that I think the board were really, really, in my opinion, were able to discuss freely, and I really want to thank all of my colleagues on the board. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? We're good? Oh, please.
I think, right now, we need stable, sustainable leadership. And bottom line, the simple bottom line is, I think this vote brings us that, especially for the next two to four years. There's a lot more to say, but to me, that's the bottom line.
Thank you. I think just as, as Board President, I just want to say thank you. I'm, I'm very excited to lead at least the rest of my six months with you as president and to support you and our district, and so we can really do some really great work. And I'm really excited to move forward with your permanence. Yay. So with that said, anyone, oh, please.
Chancellor Roman, congratulations. I think we've been up here together for a good decade now, so I've always appreciated your efforts to unify and bring people together. And I think that's certainly, in the times and situations we're in, I think unity is very important. Being on the same page is very important. Supporting each other is very important. I know there's some big challenges in front of us. And I, I very much appreciated it in the process that we went through, everyone. It's a, it's a, it's a good way to see somebody's thought process laid out in front of the board and, and in a way that can understand this isn't caretaking, this is moving forward, this is moving together, this is moving collaboratively, and that's very exciting, and it's very positive. Did also want to note that I think probably one of the first things we have to start talking about is, is our long-term future at East LA College. And, but, but thank you, Dr. Veras, I think I've seen him here, for your steady hand and, and the comments that were made publicly about the fact that this transition process has happened as smoothly as it can be. But again, one of the big things on the table are certainly our largest institution in the district. So how we handle that long-term is very important. But again, thank you. Welcome permanently here, Dr. Roman, and thank you, Dr. Veras, for being a chancellor, a champion here at East LA.
Please, yeah. So, Dr. Roman, I have a few things to say. First of all, thank you for your leadership, and we've worked together now for the past 10 years. Some of my most challenging times on this board were during COVID and also during contract negotiations. When I was Board President and you were Vice Chancellor of HR, we got it done. It wasn't easy. But you were always accessible, especially in those early days of COVID, when, you know, we had a lot of challenges with employees not understanding, like, how do they come to work? Do they come to work? Many of them worked in your area, and I think we worked through those challenges together. We worked through contract negotiations together until the wee hours of the morning. And so I really appreciate your leadership, and this is a great next step forward into the future. So congratulations.
Okay. With that said, Lupe, roll call, please.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena? Trustee Henderson?
Most definitely.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
I was going to do yes, but no. Okay.
Thank you. Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's a unanimous vote, and so, Chancellor? Please take, take as much words.
Oh, my goodness. 50,000 pound rock just came off my shoulders, right? Let me, first of all, again, thank the Board of Trustees for placing this trust in me to lead this incredible institution we call LACC D. To me, this is both a privilege and a profound responsibility, and one that I accept with grace, with gratitude, and a clear sense of purpose. You know, community colleges are the heart of opportunity for many underserved students across the nation. But LACC D is truly not an exception. We serve some of the most historically underserved and underrepresented communities in Los Angeles, and we're very proud of that. So I'm taking this role with a deep sense of pride, with hope, and with an understanding of who we proudly serve. You heard it already, my immigrant story, first-generation college graduate, certainly identifying with the lived experiences of many of our students at LACC D. And I really look forward to working transformatively, but collaboratively, with our board, with our presidents, with our leadership teams at the district, at the colleges, with our faculty, staff, senate, labor leaders, and all of the stakeholders who really have an impact on the educational journey of every single one of our students. Listen, we're going to continue to expand access, opportunities, support our faculty, our staff, foster inclusion, make sure our colleges remain welcoming environments for our students. And most importantly, I think, to ensure that every single one of our students, regardless of SIP code, background, socioeconomic status, gender status, gender identity. that every single one of them has the power to reach their fullest academic potential. That is really why we're here, and this is really what we're all about. So let me end with this. First of all, I want to thank my family. They have been amazing supporters of me, and they have been there unwavering. I also want to thank the board again for their trust in me, all of you here, and certainly for those who place their faith in my leadership from day one. Thank you so much, uh, for supporting my leadership. You know who you are, you're there. And lastly, I'm gonna probably attribute my achievement to my father.
Oh.
My father, again, immigrant, hard-working man, family man who was always there to support his family. Passed away in a, a year and a half ago. I can't think of a better way to honor his legacy than with this achievement. So colleagues, thank you so much. Let's roll up our sleeves. I'm ready to be your permanent chancellor. Thank you so much. Thank you.
We, we will do some celebrating after the board meeting, so um, you make sure to stick around. Um, but we do have to get back to business, but, um, thank you and congratulations. Um, okay, so now we have um item A A recommendations from the chancellor, board policy eleven hundred, Los Angeles Community College District, second reading. Um, would you please provide a plea, a brief explanation to the, the action item?
Yes, um, Madam President, this is a, a technical um update uh to board policy eleven hundred. Uh, we're simply updating the locations, uh, that have been included now. It's part of the district. We have the uh corporate center, Gold Creek, and the Bandicamp Innovation Center. So, uh, it's all technical in nature, and I would encourage a uh yes vote for this.
Yes. Um, can it, can I get a motion and a second? Moved by trustee Bueno, second by trustee Hernandez. Any questions or discussion needed? Um, roll call, please Lupe.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman? Absent. Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Um, great. So, um, item B B, uh, public hearing to adopt resolutions to convey easement to Spectrum Pacific West LLC. The board will now open public hearing regarding the resolution to convey easement uh to Spectrum Pacific West LLC before considering adoption. Wait, just.
No public comments, no comment, no public comment.
Okay, so, um, are there any members of the public? Oh, okay. Um, no public comments. Uh, so now I will close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. Um, item C C requiring a supermajority, um, uh, to adopt the resolution. Oh, now to come, um, adopt the resolution, right? Let me take that one. No, no, it's okay. Um, may I have a motion and a second on item C C one?
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bueno, second by trustee Vella. Um, are there any discussion, any discussion colleagues? No. Um, Chancellor, um, Roman, do we have any trustees? No, no disclosures. Um, roll call, please Lupe.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman absent. Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Um, item D D, there are four notices to review for board policies. Um, no action is required at this time. Um, item E E, would any of my colleagues like to make any announcements or indicate future proposals for action? That looks also like a, a negative. Um, item F F, public comments. The First Amendment, um, and Brown Act guarantee a member of the public to, the right to criticize a public employee of pub, public official in the performance of their duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their commitment on ish, comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public's business rather than on private unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect defamatory statements made, um, which may be subject a speaker to personal liability. Are there any members of the public signed up to address the board on matters not on the agenda? Yes. Um, so first for item F F, I do have, um, Wendy Brill Lincoops, um, in person here on behalf of FAC Institutional Partnerships. And then two on Zoom.
Do you have to turn this on? It's on. Great. I'm not here to criticize, just so you know. Hello, uh, Board President Ino, um, trustees, and congratulations chancellor. Um, I'm Wendy Brill Weincoop. I'm the president of the Faculty Association of California Community Colleges, otherwise known as FAC. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here at the encouragement of trustee Hoffman, who is a FAC member. I'd also like to point out that, um, President Ino is also a FAC member, and I have a few friends over here on the side that are also FAC members. Um, what is FAC? FAC has been a leading statewide voice for the community college faculty and students for over seventy years. FAC is a professional membership organization that works with our state and union partners to advocate for community college faculty in service to their students. And we've also driven groundbreaking legislation to transform colleges, promote equity, and strengthen student support. Um, we believe that empowering faculty is key to student success, and robust professional development equips faculty to provide high-quality, life-changing education. Um, FAC is introducing our new institutional partnership program. By becoming a partner, L A C C D can support FAC's advocacy work and gain benefits for faculty and students. Um, benefits include policy analysis, campus workshops, conference, conference registrations, and leadership training. Please, uh, have an ask to consider joining a network of equity-minded districts working together to advance shared priorities. Um, I have some materials with me of any of the college presidents would like them. I'm happy to hand them out when I'm finished. And I hope that, um, I'm invited to some of the campuses to, uh, meet with them and do a presentation or the full board if that's at your pleasure. So again, I thank you for your time and, uh, your support of community college faculty, and we have a desire to partner with L A C C D. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, so we now have two additional folks, um, Angela Johnson, who I see is on Zoom.
She's, she's, she's on. Yes, I'm here.
Hello.
Hello.
You'll have three minutes. Are you ready?
I'm ready. I am ready. Thank you so much for having me. Um, I'm here, um, to talk about the, um, situation with the journalism program at Los Angeles City College. Um, myself and a group of students, fellow students, um, came to the last, um, board meeting, but the situation has only gotten worse since last we were there. Um, we have our J one eighty-five, J two eighty-five classes that are supposed to be independent study. They were taken off the schedule, and they were put back on the schedule arbitrarily. So when students checked on the schedule to see if they could register for those classes, they weren't there. Then they were added back. And so the reason they're taking these classes away, they say, is because of, um, low enrollment, uh, the, uh, visual, uh, media arts, uh, leadership, which is the chairman and the dean. So, uh, this can be very confusing for students when they're trying to get their, uh, false class schedule together. So they look, it's there, they look, it's not there. You know what I'm saying? It's, it's, it can be unnerving when, like I said, when you're a journalism student, you're trying to get your, your situation right. Okay, that's the first thing. Then, um, they say, the leadership say, they're doing a viability study in support of the journalism program. So I want to know if you're doing a journal, uh, viability study in support of the program, it's counterintuitive to me when at the same time you're juggling this class schedule and you're taking classes away. Case in point, uh, the J two twenty class, which is a, a magazine class, uh, they took it away, but they say they didn't take it away. They took it away from being offered once a year, once a year, to now it's offered once every two years. And again, students are not, um, notified of this, so they're going to register, and they're disappointed, as I was, to find out, oh, no, it's not offered the one time a year. You know, it's, it's not going to be there. And so I also want to address the issue. These are questions I, I think, need to be asked, and I want, uh, the visual and media arts, uh, department leadership to be held accountable. Please, trustees, hold them accountable. Ask them these questions. Where is the money, uh, that was supposed to be used, uh, to publish the magazine, the award-winning Collegian Times? Where is that money at that was supposed to publish it for spring twenty twenty-five? And there's a discrepancy. Um, we have a bill of twelve thousand dollars, uh, that's supposed to pay for it, that's supposed to come out of lottery, uh, funds, but, uh, the administration of the college maintains it costs thirty thousand dollars and that they take a budgetary hit on it. I just want to know the truth. Is it twelve thousand dollars or is it thirty thousand dollars? Does the school take a hit, or is it paid for by, um, lottery funds? Another question. Uh, somebody needs to be held accountable.
I'm sorry, your team's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next we have Rosio Flores, Haring, Haringa?
She's on. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
You'll have three minutes.
Well, I think she, uh, wait a minute, I think she, um, dropped. She's back, though. Let me pull through. Rosio, Rosio. Yeah, I don't see her. Oh, I see her now. She's, no, she's here, she's here. She's back on. Only promoted to panel. She's, she's moving over.
Hello, uh, can you hear me fine?
Yes, thank you. You have three minutes.
Three minutes.
Okay, so this is Rosio Flores, Waringa. Uh, I used to be a student at L A C C and I graduated with a journalism major, some associate degree. I later on transferred to the, um, program, uh, literature program at UCLA and was part of the Daily Bruin. Uh, the main reason why I'm here is because I want you to fund back, uh, the journalism program. I think during this difficult political times where there are many attacks against our freedom of press as a constitutional right, uh, investing in journalism programs is necessary and critical. Um, when I joined the program, I was a very insecure person. I had just recently moved to the U S from Peru. Um, and, uh, Journalism One O One was one of the first classes that I took, and it really provided me with confidence. Uh, I remember when I started reading, um, the news, uh, in, in one of the classes, I was very nervous, and when I graduated the program, I became a very strong, um, uh, communicator. I also, uh, was the editor-in-chief of that collegian and participated as a journalist and also photographer, uh, for the newspaper. Um, I was also a copy editor. I gained very important skills. Right now, I work for a social media company, and with the support of Professor Rhonda Guest, I was able to gain very strong communication skills and critical thinking that are so relevant, uh, to these times now. Uh, we get a lot of information from the media and from television right now, and it's hard for people to know how to assess what is real or what is not. The journalism program provides those essential critical skills, uh, so, uh, we can respond and assess this information properly. Additionally, again, a lot of research skills, storytelling, uh, I learned about ethical standards, how to really assess bias or unbiased information, problem solving, and crisis management, which is very important too when we're assessing risk. Right now, I work as a program manager, so this is work that I do every day where I'm constantly assessing, uh, what are the trade-offs for something and communicating on a daily basis with stakeholders and letting them know, um, what are some things that may work for them or not. Um, and I wouldn't have been able to become this leader if I wasn't part of that journalism program, and also I wouldn't have been able to do this without the support of Professor Rhonda Guest that not only extended to the classes she taught, but also beyond that. When I was taking the lab classes, I got a lot of one-on-one support from her and a lot of very critical feedback from her. I was able to learn how to receive feedback and how to give feedback to others as well. And, uh, Professor Rhonda Guest is a quality professional, and I hope you can keep supporting the journalism program so she can keep providing that education, uh, to new students, um, at L A C C. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Great. Um, are there any other public comments on matters not on the agenda?
No.
No. Um, are there any members of the public signed up to address the board on closed agenda?
No.
No. Okay, so with that said, the board will now recess for fifteen minutes to celebrate the appointment of Chancellor Roman, to celebrate Classified Employee Month, to also celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week, and to celebrate trustee Vella's birthday. After the break is concluded, the board will resume closed session in accordance with the Ralph Brown um, and Brown Act, Government Code Sections five four nine five zero, um, and the Education Code to discuss the matters on the proposed, posted closed agenda item pursuant of Government Code Section five four nine five four point five. Are there any objections? Hearing none, we can now recess for the short break to celebrate all that we are, um, celebrating. Yeah.